Madam Mayor, recording has begun.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for our July 30, 2024 council meeting. Ms. Phipps, could you please do a roll call?
Mayor James.
Here.
Councilman Winkler.
Present.
Councilman Trolinger.
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Present.
Councilman Jenkins.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Would you all please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda. I need to amend this, so I am going to make a motion to amend the agenda by removing 4.2, which is AgroCopia dam breach analysis, and 6.2 Resolution 24-17. Do I have a second?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I second your motion with the amended agenda.
Thank you so much. All in favor? Oh, any discussion?
Is there a reason?
Just so we're better prepared for it.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting on June 18 and the special meeting in closed session on June 28. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we approve the minutes from the regular meeting on June 18, 2024, and the special meeting in closed session on June 28, 2024.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. That brings us to our petitions, communications, and public comments. We have a proclamation today on Farmer's Market Week. If you would kindly read that, Councilman Trolinger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Farmer's Market Week is August 4 through 10, 2024, whereas Southern Maryland farmers and ranchers provide citizens with access to healthful, locally and regionally produced foods through farmer's markets, which are expanding and evolving to accommodate the demand for a diverse array of agricultural products. And whereas farmer's markets and other agricultural direct marketing outlets provide infrastructure to assist in the distribution of farm and value-added products, thereby contributing approximately $9 billion each year to the U.S. economy. And whereas farmer's markets serve as significant outlets by which small to medium, new and beginning, and veteran agricultural producers market agricultural products, generating revenue that supports the sustainability of family farms and the revitalization of rural communities nationwide. And whereas the town of La Plata recognizes the importance of expanding agricultural marketing opportunities that assist and encourage the next generation of farmers and ranchers generate farm income to help stimulate business development and job creation, build community connections through rural and urban linkages. And whereas the La Plata Farmer's Market provides a marketplace dedicated to the sale of local and regional agricultural products, home-baked goods, handcrafted items, and promotes and supports the region's agricultural heritage and independent small businesses, and serves as a foundation for building partnerships among farmers, agriculturists, consumers, and the business community. And whereas the La Plata Farmer's Market has been recognized as a regional hub offering products from a broad range of local growers, producers, and creators, providing and welcoming diverse populations the opportunity to enjoy these products and supporting local tourism and economic development. Now, therefore, we, the council of the town of La Plata, to further awareness of farmer's markets' contributions to our citizens' everyday life and our local economy, to hereby proclaim the week of August 4 through 10, 2024, as Farmer's Market Week in the town of La Plata, in conjunction with the observance of National Farmer's Market Week. This is signed by the council of the town of La Plata, Janine E. James, Mayor, David Winkler, Councilman, Matthew Trolinger, Councilman, Evelyn Bryant Ward, Councilwoman, and David Jenkins, Councilman.
Thank you very much. And if you haven't had the opportunity to visit our amazing Farmer's Market on Wednesdays and Saturdays, please take a moment to go by there. Lots of vendors, food trucks, locally-produced foods and goods. It is something that you'd want to spend a little bit of time with. This brings us to National Night Out Grant Awards. Our National Night Out is coming up next Tuesday, I think it is. And it is an opportunity for our law enforcement officers to go to the neighborhoods, as well as all of us getting out and greeting one another. And there's usually some good food that's involved. We have three recipients of our grants. Do we have anybody from Washington Square here? Faith Temple Bay Baptist Church? Or King's Grant? Okay. Well, that makes it a little easier. Well, all three of them applied for our grants. And I know that King's Grant has something amazing going on. And Washington Square always does, too. And Faith Temple Baptist Church has a lot of fun. Hot dogs and hamburgers there. So make sure you get out on Tuesday, see our police officers out there, and greet your neighbors. Next on the agenda is public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to speak, I ask that you just state your name, whether you live in the Incorporated Town Limits, and limit your comments to three minutes. Anybody? All right, moving right along. We'll go with our monthly reports. We have the police first. Captain Norris. Right, counsel, do you have any questions or clarifications for Captain Norris?
Madam Mayor. Captain Norris, just one question. It's the question I ask every time you give this report. Juvenile arrest from the Sheriff's Department. Chief said that we didn't really track them because we don't get to do anything with them if we do encounter them. But we could get data from the Sheriff's Department. Did you bring any of that data?
Yeah, I believe the chief had put it in the monthly report. Trying to find it right now.
I didn't see it.
Is that the number nine?
Yeah, the juvenile. Oh, no, that's not it.
It's nine to you, right?
Which one was it? I thought I saw it anywhere.
Yeah, I know that one. That's not it. Those are the encounters that we can track. But he said there were encounters that occurred that we could not attract, but the Sheriff's Department had better data.
Yeah, Captain, I'm from the Sheriff's Office, and I have been tracking juvenile interactions with the department. That's going to be added to the monthly.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Is that not a match? I think those are ours.
Yeah.
Yeah, the ones I think that are included in this are, it's still a La Plata Police Department's interactions. Like Captain Payne said, he's been reaching out to their juvenile coordinator, and she's supposed to be getting him some more information that they get through teen court and just their interactions through tracking. But like you know, it's our dealings with juveniles. We deal with juveniles plenty when we're out on calls for service. But as far as any kind of enforcement activity, we're pretty limited now with the police reform, so.
And it's just, you know, that we continue to see the increase in Waldo. And we know that things tend to migrate south.
Correct.
And just trying to monitor that and see what's going on there, making sure that we're prepared for when it happens here. I know you guys do an excellent job of community policing. You know the communities, you know the residents, for the most part. But we can't know everything that happens here. And so when we're, you know, seeing those increases, want to make sure it doesn't come out here.
All right. Any other questions for Captain Norris?
I do. I got my hand raised.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just a question on the slide that says Monthly Council Report, Part 1 Crimes and Cases. There's a red circle around misdemeanor assaults. Is that for a reason to highlight something or an issue?
That's just to show the uptick. And it was high. It's in higher average of misdemeanor assaults than we normally have. The in parentheses right next to it is the 41 misdemeanor assaults throughout the year. And we had 13 just in July.
Any, this is probably a dumb question, but is there any, I guess, logic or reason behind that increase?
I'd say historically, it's typically due to the heat, people being out more, more family activities, dealing with domestics. You know, all the kids are at home, parents are stressed out with kids' behaviors. You know how it is.
Yeah, I did. They're out of the house now, but yeah. And then just some generalized, thank you, some generalized comments. And I'm sure the council will have more to say as well. But I just want to say congratulations to Captain Norris and Acting Sergeant Johnson for their many years of service. They're on the slides. And then, of course, the chief is on the, this task force he was appointed to by the governor, so that's really appreciated. And then Corporal Madison completed a court. So I just wanted, again, to highlight those and congratulate you guys for maintaining that professionalism and your dedication to the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes. Thank you, Captain Norris. I wanted to just acknowledge the efforts done by the department in finding the missing person earlier this month, as well as commend the department as it related to stolen vehicle described in the slideshow in July 6, and then the July 14 decision to terminate the pursuit. You know, unfortunately, like, you know, officers have to weigh the balance, weigh the decision of apprehending a suspect versus the community at large, unfortunately, very often. And in this instance, you guys were able to apprehend the suspect, work together, and still take care of the case without putting the general public at large by pursuing the vehicle. And oftentimes, unfortunately, this is especially true with municipalities. There's an aspect of police work where your adrenaline's pumping, you're trying to get the bad guy, and then something that should be foreseen happens, and somebody, an innocent bystander, is taken out. And so I just want to commend the department for consistently going by their policies and procedures. Because if you know the rules, and you're applying them, and leadership is enforcing them throughout the department, you can keep the public safe. So I just, I appreciated this aspect in the description here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Director Harrington, Planning Monthly Report. Does anybody have any questions for Director Harrington? Go ahead, Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you. Again, thanks for the good report and the stats, but I was trying to scroll down to the issue of the, here it is, the Citizen Poro e-review software. Is that still causing issues, or it hasn't been implemented yet? I mean, what's the latest on that?
So it has not been implemented yet. We are working on putting the data together. The company has asked me to fill out their smart sheets to kind of put in who's going to be reviewing the software, who's going to be using the software. And so it's a work in progress. I think our next meeting is towards the end of August to look at setting up the training.
And then the training after that will be some form of introduction, or be able to be accessed or in use within, what, a couple of months after that?
Most likely, yes.
And then, real quick, any update on the APFO process, African Public Consolidated Ordinance Process?
So we did have a conversation with the town attorney about that. We are looking back at some data and trying to move forward with the draft revisions.
And so that'll go to the planning commission? And will there be hearings? You may have told me this before, but I forget.
So depending on where it goes in the town's code, if it's not within the zoning chapter, it would not go to the planning commission. As with any code revisions or code adoption, there would most likely be a public hearing, I believe, with the town council. But I'm not exactly sure on that. I'd have to double check.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm free for the APFO review.
I do not have a note right now.
Right. Thank you very much. All right. Up next will be Mr. Garner. Director Garner. All right.
Good evening.
Questions for Director Garner? No.
I have one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Garner, in the past, we walked through Steeplechase because there were sidewalks that were uneven, and there were trip hazards. I had a resident to fall. She tripped over the sidewalk because it doesn't match with the edge of the sidewalk, the piece before it. And we discovered that it was coming from the trees that were raising them up. Is there any plan to finish shaving those down so that we can eliminate that trip hazard?
Well, yeah, right now, we're actually in the process of sidewalk evaluations for FY '25. So we haven't made it to Steeplechase yet, but we're currently in King's Grant and AgroCopia at the time.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garner, for the report. Again, fair enough. Yeah, there's a, under street signs, you're creating your FY '25 paving list. And so I'm assuming, again, that there'll be some kind of a notification to the different neighborhoods when and if you start paving.
Yes, we're finalizing that as we speak. I got a couple of things to follow up with Donnie on. And then the proposed list should be coming out tomorrow, especially to Karina, because I know she wants it for the budget book. But the proposed list should be done tomorrow.
Because I know in the last year or so, two years, there's been a great effort to update the public of when they might start paving up or repair work in communities in that neighborhood. And that's a big, big help. I've gotten a lot of good positive feedback. So I would, I guess you're going to continue that. So that's great. And then finally, you're talking about the Redwood Circle, and I guess that stormwater management. Is that going to start this fall to, you know, for the rehabilitation of a pond there at Redwood Circle?
I think it's still under review, but I'll let Melinda. Melinda will have to follow up on that. I'm still trying to get caught up on the stormwater stuff.
Okay, sure.
So.
Yeah, we don't have a date. Yeah.
Okay. And again, I assume that the neighborhood will be notified when they're going to anticipate start of construction.
Yes.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, there you go, Ms. Larson. Any questions for our treasurer?
Just, I guess, a comment. Councilman Jenkins, just a quick comment. I see you've added some information about why certain elements are over budget or whatever. So that's very helpful to understand why that happens. So thanks, and I hope you continue that. Just a brief update of why things are out of whack. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And next up, I always skip them, right? It's Director Phipps. Any questions for Director Phipps? I do have one. Can you tell us a little bit more about the survey that went out to our residents?
Yes, and I am so glad you asked, Madam Mayor, because I neglected to include that in my monthly report. That started, it opened up to the public, actually just to residents at the beginning of the month. There was a follow-up to make sure that they could do the online survey and the option to call in and get a paper survey if they wanted. We did send in, I believe, about 14 requests for paper surveys. Polco mails those out, and we'll be collecting data until August 13, which time Polco will take all the received data, do an analysis, make a report for us, and it'll all come out on a dashboard that's accessible online. So if you registered to do a survey, then you'll have access to the results.
That's great. And that way, people have a voice, too.
Yes, absolutely.
What's going on in the town.
And then that data will be available September 10.
Right. Any other questions or comments for Director Phipps? Thank you very much. And Director Kennedy, any questions for Director Kennedy?
Right. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Can you give us, and I read your report, but can you give us a verbal update on how the enhanced retirement process is working so far?
So I actually got a referral through NFP, which is our broker, who then said, well, we don't exactly do this, but here's the other team that they work with. So I have a meeting Thursday morning.
What's, is it Helios Focus?
Well, yeah, so Helios partners with Aon. And so that's the company that I'm going to talk to the guy, let him know, like, here's where we're at, what we're looking for. And he's going to kind of sit with and see, make sure that it is something that they can do. So I'll move forward with him. My attempts to contact Bolton to see if they had a provider. Tom hasn't responded back to me. So I'm going to go this direction for the moment and see where it leads me.
When you submit what we're, you know, looking for to Helios via Aon or whoever, is that a written submission? Is that verbal? What's done there?
Well, and that's what I'll find out on the meeting on Thursday, is to find out, like, what the process is, where the next steps are, what do they need from us to be able to start that process?
Given the long path this has taken, and I think the winding journey that this has had, do you think you could provide a status report along the way to Ms. Minor, to distribute to town councils, so that if there's anything that comes up along the way, we're communicating so that it's not something that causes, you know, you guys more work because you're trying to figure out what, you know, something that we can assist with, or vice versa? We want to make sure everything's transparent.
Absolutely. Everybody will be updated as I go.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Because this is a learning for all of us.
Go ahead, Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation again on your slide called Town Management. So we're not going to, will there be a process to hire a town clerk? And the director of operations position was eliminated. Is that going to require an ordinance change to do that as well?
No, no ordinance for the director of operations because that position's not actually in our code anywhere. As far as the town clerk, I've been working very closely with Director Phipps to determine what exactly does that need look like when we replace it? So if we're looking at, you know, do we need a full or part-time person, and just kind of what is that? This is our opportunity. We're going to reevaluate kind of what that looks like to make sure that when we do go back out, that we're getting the right person that we want for what we need.
And then, we'll talk later. But and then finally, on the slide, the next slide about turnover, I see where it's jumping around, but it says, is it 10%? Is that, again, so why the jump other than the fact that folks have left?
It's just a, it's just a big jump for this quarter because we just had a couple of things all happen all at once in the last few weeks. But I anticipated things remain the way they were at the beginning of the year, then by the end of the year, we're going to be back in a normal range.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to our matters of council discussion. And first up is our Comcast franchise agreement renewal and the repeal of Chapter 84. And we are going to have Jay Gallow take that.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me. It's great to address you about this issue. And I want to give you just a little background so you can see how it fits into everything that you're doing. You have a franchise agreement with Comcast, and you also have one with Verizon. And the reason you have a franchise agreement is because these companies use the public right-of-way for their cables and lines and things like that. So since it's the public's right-of-way, you have to regulate what they do in it. And so you had your first franchise agreement with Comcast years and years ago. The last one was written in 2006 and expired in 2016. And since 2016, it's just been expired. But you all have had cable, and everybody's been going along. It's just the fact that nobody ever really took steps to renew it. When I came on board, which has been three years ago now, it was still in the attorney's hands. And I was tasked with trying to renew the agreement, which, of course, you can imagine, has changed in the last 20 years with the FCC regulations and so forth. So what you have in front of you that you're asked to look at is basically the latest and greatest that was used between Comcast and Charles County. That was the template. It's not exact because we didn't need some of the things Charles County has. But we got rid of those things and basically negotiated out this agreement with Comcast. There are, like any lease, right? You've dealt with leases in your life and mortgages. They're all boilerplate types of things. There's only a few key terms that you need to look at. So the first term is that this agreement will last for 10 years, which is the standard of the industry. That's what you've had in the past. There is a franchise fee that Comcast pays to the town for the use of the right-of-ways, and that is 5% of their cost. So you can see that on everybody's bill. If you look, Comcast has a 5% franchise cost. They pay that over the year. And the only other interesting provision is called a PEG grant, P-E-G. It used to be called Public Education and Government. And we remember back when cable came out, there were these channels that had local information on it, and it kind of sat there for a while. Well, the FCC changed a little bit of that, saying these channels, which cost money to operate and maintain if they're not used, if you don't use them, you lose them. And obviously, the town is not in a position to use a PEG channel. You'd have to have a studio, you know, it's way beyond what our reach is at this point in time. However, in negotiating with Comcast, we said that, yeah, we don't do those things, but we do provide information to the public that is sort of like that. And we'd like an assistance from them, a grant from them, to upgrade things. And that would be like your monitors, your microphones, your cameras, the things that we're using right now. So Director Phipps came up with a proposal under the prior town manager of what it would cost to do what we wanted to do. And the cost was about $26,000, you know, 24, $25, $6,000. So we went to Comcast and said, we expect you to pay half of that. And so you'll see later in the agreement, if you dig through it, they're going to give us a grant for $13,500. They also pay a renewal fee of $5,000. And of course, that's to help offset the cost for all the staff time, the legal time, and everything required to do this. So that is what is going to be in front of you. But since you really haven't dealt with cable things since, really, 2006, we went through the code, and there are two chapters in your code that are relevant to cable services, Chapter 82 and Chapter 84. And they're both very technical in nature. And what we're proposing for you is Chapter 82 is fine, as it is, sits right now. It gives you the authority to enter into a franchise agreement and sets the parameters we talked about. Chapter 84 is completely outdated and antiquated. It talks about how the town can step in and deal with rate disputes. It talks about how you would be able to set variable rates. It was what existed back when cable franchise came out in the 80s and 90s. So what we're proposing for you, and you'll see on your agenda tonight, is that you will eventually repeal Chapter 84 and just take that part out of the codebook, leaving you with just Chapter 82. Eventually, you will have to have a public hearing on this franchise agreement. And I believe that Ms. Minor can tell you when we're planning on doing that. But you'll have a public hearing on that, and then you can adopt it. So that's what's in front of you. And I'd like to give you what the next step is, because I told you about Verizon. We have a franchise with them, and their franchise expired last year. And we haven't contacted them, they haven't contacted us. It was one of those things that kind of fell through the crack. Uh, the FCC requires parity. So if you have a franchise agreement with certain provisions with one party, you're going to have to have the same type of provisions with the other party. So we're going to have to approach Verizon, tell them they're going to need to renew, pay the renewal fee, and then go through the same thing. The best part is we have the template we want to use now. And I guess the extra best part is when I said that the PEG grant was half of the amount. That's where we intend to get the other half parity for both parties then. So we'll have the whole twenty-six thousand. And that's it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Um, but uh, this is, I think, just for your discussion tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jay, um, when I look through the um, Comcast agreement, we still have Dorchester Community Center in there, and we don't have a Dorchester Community Center. We're not using that building. We've not constructed a new building. Does that need to remain?
Well, the question, what we, what we negotiated was free service. So if we ever in the scope of ten years want to give service to a Dorchester community building, wherever, wherever that would be, we would be able to do that. I'm glad you pointed that out. In the past, we paid for service even to the town hall. This is one of the new things we got is that cable service for us, and those listed in there would be free. So we felt if we kept it in there, it's something we could maybe utilize later.
Okay, thank you.
Jay, and this might be getting a little bit in the weeds, but um, since two thousand and six, have they been paying any fees or franchise fees? Or have we been collecting any franchise fees since it's been?
Yes, the, the franchise fees have, have flowed at the same rate of five percent since. And um, what we, I guess, missed out on, if you looked at it, since we missed it almost by ten years, uh, would be the renewal fee uh, for five thousand dollars, which is really intent to, to, to offset our costs. So we didn't really miss out on anything.
So a, and, and this kind of, if I've, because I read through it rather hurriedly, but if I'm not mistaken, the franchise fee only apply, applies to television, correct? Not internet or phone?
That's correct.
Okay, so how does, how, I mean, everybody's cutting cable and going to, to uh, streaming services. So does this mean that in ten years, we could be getting zero from Comcast for, but they're still running their internet and their phone lines through?
That, that is correct. That was uh, when the um, the discussion came out about the third generation that we dealt with, the small cells, uh, where they wanted to put the small cell towers in the right-of-way. We wouldn't be able to charge them franchise fees under the FCC rules because it's digital, um, you know, like internet type of thing. And so the reality is the old model of cable service is going to go out and we'll eventually, um, our franchise fees are going to go down. Now, the reality is, these franchise fees, if you want to look at it on the whole scope, is to pay us back for the right-of-ways that we had to acquire since the town began. So we really don't spend any money to maintain franchises, so to maintain the right-of-ways for these people. They have to pay for it themselves. So said another way, these franchise fees are a windfall, but they will be lost revenue as we go forward.
I guess, I guess my concern is that we're granting a a publicly traded company, whether it's Verizon or Comcast, but you're granting them a right-of-way to which we know that we are going to get, they're going to have all the benefit and we're going to have none of the reward. Um, so that's my, and, and the only reason I said is, under the section of force majeure, it, it says the unavailability of, of materials and or qualified labor. And let's face it, you ask any town resident about the cable company, and they're going to tell you a horror story of, I couldn't get a hold of anybody. I, I guess my, 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 where I'm going with it is that if we get nothing from them and we know we're getting nothing from them, where's our, where's our skin in the game to, to hold them accountable, I guess, is, is my question.
Well, we have a ability to hold them accountable. I mean, there's a lot of terms in there, like with the oversight, the auditing and the accounting, which really deals with the money side of things. Um, the way the, the, um, the code sections work is that we have the ability to deal with quality of service issues too. Um, the, the problem, I mean, so we have that ability. The problem is, would you ever think when you're fighting the, because everybody fights the cable company, right? Because we always have bad service and we have to wait for the guy to come out and everything like that. When you're going through that, would you ever think to call the town to help? And of course, it would never cross my mind that the town would be somebody that could help me on this. But the reality is, under our codes, we could. And we may, maybe need to have a better relationship with these providers. They treat them like utility providers so that we don't let something expire for ten years and not know it expired. Or in Verizon, the case, a year it expired and nobody really knew. Maybe you, maybe you have somebody who that's their job is start to think about that.
Thank you, Jack.
Councilman Jenkins, go ahead.
Just real quick, uh, thanks for getting us through the finish line. Uh, most of my questions were answered, uh, so thanks for doing that. And I just, I, I know you've already written this up and I see on the section about damages. I, is that enough or do we have any more clout that we could? Because a couple of years ago, they were out there digging illegally and didn't have a permit. And, and so anyway, and I, I didn't know whether it, it, that's in your eyes sufficient to, to make it comply.
The, the biggest issue that most municipalities have is that, um, is the fact that all of a sudden they're out there in the street, ripping the street up and not, not putting it back the way they're supposed to. And it is entirely within our power to make them comply, just as if anybody else would. And the fact that we have an agreement with them gives us even more authority. You know, my thought is, is that what my, most of my clients do is they adopt this agreement and they put it in the, the file and nobody ever looks at it for the next ten years. Maybe we need to get like permitting and code enforcement and public works like, you know, this in the forefront and the fact if you see a cable truck that's climbing a pole and digging a hole, hey, we need you to make sure it complies with this. Uh, you know, I don't know whether this would be something where you would just do it from permitting's office or code enforcement, but they should be well of that, aware of that.
Because in this instance, two years ago, in my neighborhood, I was riding by in my car and these guys were digging a hole, digging the line, and it was right next to a, a town fire hydrant. And I saw it, and so I called and nope, they didn't have a permit. So they, to their credit, they went right out there and stopped, they shut them down until they got a permit. Because honestly, we're all concerned about it. If they hit something that causes this, a major damage to our infrastructure, that's a big deal. So thank you.
All right, so I'm looking for consensus to move this forward to legislation, Councilman.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Jenkins, Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And I am too, so we will move that forward. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks, Jay. All right, that brings us to matters of information. Sminer.
Um, I've just got two items that I want to make the council aware of, since they were very high priorities on your list. And um, I think I sent an email out about this. And I know that the human research department had it on their list, but I'm going to talk about it anyway. Um, we have in, we have three interviews for this, for the IT position. Uh, we got about a dozen applications, culled it down to about ten, and I think we're interviewing, going to try and interview six so far. So those interviews are the end of this week and Monday of next week. And one other thing that was on the council priorities, um, we have contracted with an engineering firm for an on-call status. So um, we have a contract with them. If something should come up, we have somebody we can deal with.
Great. Any questions for Sminer? That's always great news. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to our legislation. And the first one is uh, the ordinance twenty-four dash twelve, chapter eighty-four cable television rate regulation.
Madam Mayor, um, to repeat you, ordinance twenty-four dash twelve, chapter eighty-four, cable television rate regulation, first reading for introduction, and ordinance concerning chapter eighty-four cable television rate regulation for the purpose of revealing, you peeling chapter eighty-four cable television rate regulations.
Thank you very much. And then it brings us to new business, our reports from uh, the dais here. Councilman Winkler?
Um, I have nothing to report. I have, next, next week, next week.
All right, thank you. Councilman Challenger?
I was unfortunately unable to attend the beautification meeting because our um, air conditioning went out in my office. As Councilwoman Bryant Ward knows, she was helpful in referring me to some other folks to help me with that. But I, I will provide an updated report at our next meeting. I know um, the minutes were provided uh, per the uh, website, so I'll give you guys an update next time.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
No report. The planning department, planning commission didn't meet.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Jenkins?
Uh, the Parks and Rec and Recreation Commission won't meet again until September, nothing to report. And just for information, I did send uh, the council as well as copied Michelle and Ms. Kelly about maybe a grant opportunity from the Chesapeake Gateway Network Grants. Something that maybe we could pursue or not depending upon our needs and our capacity staff-wise to go after it. So I just said that about an hour before the meeting.
Thank you.
All right. And my report is, we have a resident that is interested in serving on our Board of Supervisors of Elections. Amanda Whipke is a fairly new resident of two years, who is interested in serving our community in addition to managing a business. Mandy finds time to support Keep La Plata Beautiful and Bird City, Maryland events. And I would like to accept her application and formally nominate Amanda Whipke to serve on the Board of Supervisors of Elections. Do I have a second?
Madam Mayor, second your motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I do want to ask, Madam Mayor, is this for the vacancy of the town clerk's position on that um, committee, or was there another vacancy as well?
There was a vacancy on that.
Okay, so will there be, will that be filled with, because Ms. Grigsby, she was on that as well, right?
Yes, and if we haven't filled the clerk position by then, it'll be that a Department of Legislative Services.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay, um, any other comments? All in favor? Uh, we have a, it's been nominated and properly seconded, all in favor of now, of having Amanda Whipke serve on the Board of Supervisor of Elections. Please indicate by saying aye. Aye, aye, opposed? Motion carries. Welcome aboard. Thank you so much. And going on with my upcoming events, we had a really good concert Friday night. And now we're coming into the last month of our Friday night concerts. This Friday, we have the Steve Potter Blues Band, followed by the U S Navy Band, the Cruisers, then Justin Taylor's Band. And then we're ending our series on August twenty-third with Quiet Fire. We also have some amazing kids' shows coming up. They last about forty-five minutes and uh, um, they really, they do such a great job interacting with uh, the kids, young and hard too. We've got Tuesday, August thirteenth, is Beowulf T. Wonder Bunny's traveling show of mystery. And they will help recreate the Diana Ross sewed the first American flag. And they have some goofy books and a mysterious mouse and some magic and mayhem for that. And then the grand, yeah, and I did say Diana Ross on purpose, okay? Because you all are going, whatever. It is, I know. It is a parody. So good for you guys. A little laughter there. You were paying attention. So you got to come out now to see Diana Ross on this one. So I expect all of you out there. And then on Tuesday, August twentieth, is the Grandsons Junior. It's a kids' band version of the D C area roots rock superstar, the Grandsons. And they will have swing and R and B and uh, some other music that they do. Um, and for all of you now that are sitting out here on the eleventh of uh, of, oh, you missed that one, sorry. It's not um, August eleventh, it was July. On Thursday, Kangaroo Kids. I expect to see all of you out here on Thursday. Where are you going to be jumping rope for forty-five minutes? There you go. And maybe learn a little bit about Diana Ross. Uh, and then on the fifteenth, they have the Harlem Wizards, which is Jump With Joy, Laugh and Oona with our interactive show. They are um, uh, fantastic role models who entertain and educate, and they're great athletes. So a lot of fun things um, that are coming up. Our next town meeting is going to be held on Tuesday, August thirteenth. And that concludes my report. So, one last thing is, we have a reason to go into closed session. And I will entertain a motion uh, from someone if they are interested in going into closed session.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we go into closed session according to general provisions, article subsection three dash three oh five B seven, to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter, topic to obtain legal advice for potential litigation. And according to general provisions, article subsection three dash three oh five B one I, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of an appointee, employee, or official over whom it has jurisdiction, topic personnel.
Thank you very much. That was a mouthful. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, um, we will do a roll call. If you are in favor of going into closed session, please say aye. Uh, if not, please say nay. Councilman Winkler?
Excuse me, aye.
Councilman Challenger?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
And I am a aye as well. So thank you very much. And we adjourn this meeting at six forty-six. Thank you all and, and Diana Ross. There you go.
And we're going to start at seven?
It really does say Diana Ross. It's a play on words.